Councilwoman Taylor?
Present.
Councilwoman Weeks?
Present.
Councilwoman White?
And President Matthews? We call President Matthews? Perfect. And Councilmember White sent word through President Matthews that he is with professional obligation this evening. And will he be joining us at the seven o'clock session? Or?
He's gonna try.
He'll try, perfect. We appreciate and wish him safe travels, of course. But he will not be joining us at this time. All right, let's move on with the agenda. There's one very minor, somewhat semantics change that I'd like to make. Let's move item E off of the consent on the items requiring individual action. It's a single item. I want to make sure it gets discussed and understood. It is a substantial agreement and investment in lobbying consulting efforts for crossroads strategies. I just want to, it's gonna get discussed anyways. Instead of doing a consent agenda that makes it. Any issue there?
No.
This is only thing on the consent.
I know. So instead of doing a consent agenda roll call, though, just, you know, that's fine. But it's doing individual. Perfect. All right. So if I may have a motion to adopt the agenda as modified?
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as modified.
Thank you. Do we have a second? A second? Thank you, Councilwoman. Agendas been made, or sorry, motions been made and properly seconded to adopt the agenda as modified. Do you have any further come, any further debate? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you, everybody. And again, all that is, is just moving the crossroads agreements on the requiring individual action. So we'll just do a regular vote instead of a roll call. We'll move into old business. Is Mr. Barefoot here? Not yet. So we'll come, we'll come back to him in just a second. Mr. Rose, if you would, we will go ahead and begin with you. As everyone is aware, it's our practice now that we try to hear from our different boards and commissions on a about a once every four month basis, something like that. So you, as the chair of our planning commission, welcome. Thank you so much for giving us some of your time this evening.
You're welcome.
You already give a lot of your time to the city. The planning commission is a very active commission, so I appreciate you giving us a few more minutes to sort of explain the purpose, what it does, and what you expect over the next few months. And if you need anything else from us.
Okay. We are an advisory group for you guys, is what we are. I mean, you're the last word, but, you know, we hear what you hear first. And then we kind of, through our vote, advise you on where the people stand, I would say, you know? Because we're appointed to our positions, we're not elected. But anyway. And I appreciate you guys' patience. You called me before this board for the last three or four months, and I have been, could not come because of health reasons. And I appreciate your patience.
Just glad you're here tonight. Thank you.
And I am better, a lot better.
Good.
There are some problems in the planning department. There's no doubt. And I get my ear ring, I mean, my phone rings constantly from engineers. And I get where they're coming from, and I get where the planning department's coming from also. And I'm not sure if there's a shortage of staff, or they're not doing their work. I'm, you know, I haven't been doing this but two years now, and just been chairman a year. But it doesn't take me long to figure things out. I know this, the system is supposed to be, you're supposed to, when you bring a project to this, to the city, you submit it on the first of the month. You have a TRC meeting, which is the technical review committee, on the last Thursday of the month. And then, on the first of the month, the planning department gets back with the engineer or the client who submitted their application to give them a review of what's gone down. Also, if there's needed to be changes, things like that, with the engineering department, or with the fire department, or any of, some other department, water, whoever, they might say, well, we need to upgrade this, that. And then, the planning department gets hold of the engineer, say, this is your contact with the fire or engineering, and they need to speak with you on this matter. They're contacting fire and engineer, and nobody is returning phone calls. And these projects are not getting done. They need to be pushed through. We're talking about millions and millions of dollars, a lot of revenue for this county and for this city. And I don't think there's probably a bigger revenue stream than the planning board. And there's got to be systems and checks in this process. First of all, there's no, I don't think there's anyone, when a project comes through, let's say it's apartment complex, and let's say it's five million dollars. Somebody needs to put their name on this project from the planning department and say, this is your point of contact. He will help you with anything. It's not, I'm calling the planning department, well, I'm not sure who's working on that project. That's what they're getting. There's no communication. We need communication, need checks and balances, and how this system goes down. And I'm not so sure HR's not doing their job. I'm not so sure that they're just putting bodies in place. That is a, that is a busy office. And you have to have some work ethic to work in there. And if you're in HR, you need to tell whoever's applying, this is not some government job here where you're gonna be drawing a paycheck, and you're gonna be sitting in an office doing whatever you want to do and getting your time. This is a working place where you gonna have, you're gonna be accountable. And I think there's a problem there, too. Instead of just talk to HR, start telling them, we're not just filling these seats, we want permanent seats filled, we want a working, a working board and working, you know, department. I think there's a lot of problems in that. The other thing I want to tell you guys about, too, these vape shops, you're getting ready to get into a mess. These vape shops, and I know this firsthand, not secondhand, not what I've heard, seen it firsthand. They're selling this THC to these kids under sixteen years old. And you're getting ready to get the hammer come down on you. The city is selling to these kids. There's not enough checks and balances to keep these vape shops in check, and they're everywhere. I don't know what you can do about it, you know, if it's the police department or the ALA who handles it, but somebody needs to handle it. You got a problem already with these vape shops. And it's under the radar right now, but it will surface here soon. Give heads up on that. That's about all I've got to say right now. Y'all have any questions for me?
Council, I'll just, very quickly, as you gather your thoughts, these are concerns that we've heard consistently. I appreciate your candor. I realize you're, just those that do or don't know, Mr. Rose is a very frank individual, very candid guy. Not really going to, you know, powder coat very many things. I appreciate your candor. And there are, there've been a lot of conversations around how we can get this planning department into a high-functioning organization. Because I do think we have some, we have some very good people. We got to figure out why we're not getting the outcomes that we need. And we got to figure out how to get there. And we got to figure it out now. And that's something that our interim, our interim manager is not in any way curious about. He knows exactly how this board feels as well. And, you know, that we're.
I think it's checks and balances.
Right.
And, you know, how, like, when that, when the, when the project comes across, there should be a sheet sitting right there on the folder that says, this is what has to happen before it goes to TRC. And if you do not have your work done, whoever's got that folder's in charge of that folder, every one of those check marks should be checked off. I mean, I've been in business for myself, and when you're doing financing, anything else, you're not gonna get paid until check marks are done. And it's the same way with this. You're not gonna start drawing some, some tax revenue out of this until check marks are all checked off. And it's all about the speed, how fast and efficient we're doing it, because time is money. And that's.
Council, any other comments or questions? I'm certainly, certainly not trying to not cut you off, because, you know, we're here to hear from you, because we want to try to implement things that.
Well, that's the biggest one I've got. You know, I mean, and, and I'm telling you from the other side of the fence, too. Because my, my, how I look at things being on this board, I'm a, I'm a servant to the people. And that's the way government should be, a servant to the people, not the people a servant to the government. And if we're not pushing their, what they, I mean, they're bringing their projects to us, we're supposed to be helping them. And I've seen some of these projects kick the can down the road for a year. That's not fair. This is just not fair. So.
Council, any other, Councilwoman Jones, and then we'll get right behind her, then we'll.
I'm asking, I'm asking you, and I'm asking the council, do you, do we not have an organizational change? I hear you speak of when a project comes, then it sits on the desk. Should we not have someone in place to know when, when the project comes in and who is supposed to take that project?
That, that's what I was saying to you earlier, and I, this is, and I think that's a big thing, what you're saying, what you, is key. When that project comes in, it should be put on someone's, someone's desk with their name on it, and they should be responsible for it. And there should not be someone calling up to the planning department and saying, I don't know who's handling my project. They should know who's handling their project, and they should have a direct line to that person handling it. And it should never deviate. In fact, I don't even think, like, when they say the engineering department needs this, or the fire or water needs this, it should go right back to the person in the planning department. Instead of bucking it down to fire and engineering, fire and engineering need to say that to the person in the planning department who's handling this particular project. And then, the engineer gets the problems in to him, and he takes it to the fire and engineering and gets it resolved immediately. There's too many steps, too many people talking to people.
Yep. Councilwoman Jones, any other comments or questions?
But that's a great, I think you're hitting the nail right on the head with your question.
If you're, if you're talking.
If you will, Councilwoman Boyet was queued up, and then I'll call.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I'm on my mic.
Okay, good, go ahead.
Chris, you want next?
I just was gonna make a comment.
If you're, I was just gonna say, if you're talking million-dollar projects, you're talking about a lot of missed tax revenue, too. Not only should there probably be a person assigned to that, you know, some type of.
To that project.
List and date, but we've got to have some type of comparable time period, too, as to when to respond back to that individual, because it sounds like the projects are being held up in limbo for quite some time.
Right. And it, there is a time limit. And the time limit is that you submit your projects on the first of the month. On Thursday, the last Thursday of the month, that's your TRC meeting, that is your tech review committee. They go over it, and do we have everything? How does everything look? What does engineering say? What does fire say? What does water say? And then, they will come back and say, well, we need this, or we need that. And then, the planning department's supposed to get back by the first of the month to the client or the engineer who's put forward the project. This is, this is not happening in that timeframe. So there is a timeframe, it's just not happening.
Let me ask you a question. Are you aware of how long the projects are being held out?
Some, they're not getting back to them sometimes from the TRC meeting as long as a month. And, you know, when you, you got a client that's spending that ki, that kind of money, they're, these people are not, they're, they, they push forward, and they push hard. They want to get, time is money to the private sector. And I don't think, you know, it's gonna have to, it gets them mad. And I don't blame them, they get me mad, too, because it costs money.
Yeah. Counsel?
Yeah.
Just a couple of comments. Thank you, Chairman Rose, for your service on the committee and the, and the planning commission. And, and thank you to each and everyone that does serve on that commission. We have another former chairman here in the audience with us that's done an excellent job.
Yes. I enjoy being under him, too.
And I'm, I'm no stranger to, as you know, to.
Oh, you know the challenges.
Those challenges. I have twenty years on the planning commission and eighteen as chair. During that time, the city's tax base doubled.
Oh, yeah.
During, during that time that, that I was on there, and I was happy to steer that and be part of that. But we, I know the mayor's phone rings, my phone rings, manager's phone rings. We know that there's, there's some, some challenges, and, and they just didn't happen yesterday. You know, along the campaign trail, as they would say, I've said it many times prior to being elected, that, and I said it again at this past, this year's retreat, that the planning department is the cash register to this city, and it has to function, and it has to function correctly. And we intend to see that, that happens. And I have said many times along the way as well that I would like to see the city return to a much, to, to where our develop, the developers and the development world views the city of Goldsboro as open and ready to do business. And that, that's what we, we want to see. And thank you for, you know, your comments. And, and we, we feel, we feel the same way, and we want to see things running.
I think you do, too.
Full steam, sooner rather than later.
That's right. That's exactly right.
That's all my comments. That's all.
Sure, thank you. Council, any other comments or questions for Chairman Rose? Hearing none. Thank you again. Glad, glad to have you back to help.
Thank you very much.
And also.
If you need me, I don't like to overstep my bounds or anything like that, because, you know, I just don't do it. But I walk into an office, and I can look and see, look at systems and checks and balances and see where things are. If you guys need me to do anything like that, I'd be glad to help you. I mean, I'm, I'm just here to help, and I love my, I love this city. And I know you guys, too, you wouldn't be sitting in the seat you're in.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the offer. And thank you for your candor. If it pleases the council, I'm going to step back into old business and allow Mr. Darnay Barefoot to come forward, reintroduce himself. He has a presentation discussion on some things that the board is working on, as well as a little bit of revenue, also. Good to see you tonight.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. As always, I like to bring y'all money, right? Y'all like to take money. So I do have a check here I want to pass down, and I'll present it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
This is the end of twenty-three, twenty-four.
One, hey, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. And you've got the numbers.
I am the general manager with the Wayne County ABC, have been since February of 2023, when I came back. And we walked into a system, and we wanted it to grow and get some growth. And you've been down and visited with us, and so has Councilwoman Boyet, and seen our operation and what we're trying to do. I'd like to pass out, and I didn't have time to get it in color. I think I've got enough to go around.
If, yeah, if you would, just let, let Holly and Ron pass them around.
Okay.
Madam Deputy Clerk, excuse me.
As most of you know, we are a, a business that is not funded by any taxes. We provide money or make money, got to pay our bills, and we have to share the money with the county and the state. So what I did here is I ran off a quick scenario of twenty-three, twenty-four, where that last check came to the city from and showed how the breakout went for the, for the ABC board. For educational programs, we gave out sixty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. People, a lot of people that we talked to do not even realize we have to share monies in the community or put them back into the community, which we do. Educational program, sixty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. County of Wayne, two hundred and thirty thousand. City of Goldsboro, one ninety-six, four eighty. City of Mount Olive, thirty-three thousand five twenty. Wayne County Law Enforcement, one sixty-eight, sixty, six hundred and fifty-seven. Now, that goes back in, we have our own law enforcement. Now that goes back in, we have our own law enforcement, so that goes back in, uh, to the requirement, putting it back in law enforcement. The alcohol rehab, forty-three thousand, NC Department of HHS, twelve thousand, and NC Department of Revenue, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We also pay, uh, county taxes, city taxes, and we do not ca- we can't carry any debt. I don't know if you knew that, other than long-term, long, like, we're getting ready to, uh, build a new store out at Rosewood. If you're familiar with where Goshen Medical Center is, it's gonna be right on that corner across from it. And we're also in the process of putting together a package, uh, for a new warehouse and office complex out on, uh, Paytown Road, that, uh, development beside TA Love. So that's in the works. But what I, what I wanted to say was, uh, I, I thank the city for working with us and closer with working relationship than we have had. Um, anybody on the council is welcome to come by at any time our office is open and understand how it works. Uh, cause we do do a lot of things that the public don't see, and I think that's one thing that we, uh, we need to spend more time doing, and we're working on that in the office since I got there. Um, but we are open, and we want to answer questions. And we're not just into business to sell liquor to put people on the street. People come every day, they're gonna come whether we want them to or not, you know what I'm saying? But we also have programs for them too, and things we have to do. So if anybody has questions, feel free to call me, and we appreciate doing, uh, doing business with you, and hope we can help the city. We want to be a good partner to the city, the ABC does.
Well, on that one, and, and I appreciate, I appreciate what you're doing, what you've tried to do, uh, since assuming your role. And I, actually, I do want to draw a quick distinction. We are inviting our boards and commissions to come forward, the ABC board is not a city commission. It just happens to be on our agenda this evening, because with quarterly distributions, it just happened to line up for you. I don't want to give anyone a mis- a misinterpretation here. But I really do appreciate what you've tried to do in making, making the stores, they're, they're cleaner, they're well-lit. It's not something that attracts a, a variant of crime. I also really appreciate what you're doing to try and empower ALE officers out in the field, you know, serving different bars and restaurants, and going in different stores, and trying to make sure that they're doing things the way they ought to be doing it. And in our city, as you know, we have some challenges, and we, we need your help with that. We want to continue, you know, supporting your efforts in that, and hopefully you're supporting ours, and, um, try to, try to clean up some of the issues.
Well, our law enforcement is available anytime you need them. Uh, Chief, I, I know you work with them, with Jonathan and them. Uh, they do try to, they, uh, visit each location in town once to twice a year. Hadn't been done, they try to answer complaints and calls, uh, as much as they can, watch over the stores. And to give you an idea, uh, in the last year and a half, we've taken our Mount Olive store and the one at Walnut Creek, totally gutted them and remodeled them, hadn't been nothing done in forty years. Same way with our, uh, office and warehouse you all were visiting me in, nothing been done in thirty years, that's why we need to expand. Um, cause Wayne County, Goldsboro's growing, and we, and they've not stayed up with the demand, and that's what we're trying to do. But we're trying to clean them up too, and make them presentable, have a good staff on hand. Uh, give you an example, uh, our, our managers had not been to any kind of training. Uh, when I came in, they now go to Wayne Community College, and they're, uh, charged with taking management one, management two, and leadership, just to help them be better managers in the stores and deal with the public. We're also offering classes for our clerks now. So, there's, there's a lot going on that won't go on, but, but the main thing I want the commission to know, and you, is we're here if you need us, um, and I don't think our story's been told, all the things that we're doing and trying to do.
But I'm gonna take you up on that to help us with some, not your stores, but other stores, that as we get complaints about potential underage selling or things like that, you know, we're gonna reach out to you and, uh, put some pressure on folks, cause we gotta, we gotta get some things back under control around town, so.
And I agree with that.
Counsel, any comments or questions for Mr. Barefoot before I let him go about hisy? All right, thank you.
Thank you, y'all have your time.
And so, y'all know for the record, uh, this, uh, basically, this one goes from January through June of twenty-twenty-four, and it's the amount of ninety-seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the record. And these, the, an estimate of this is already al- is already built into our budget. This is not money that is coming as a surprise, but it is money that is meeting what was the, the estimate that was already accounted for in the budget. And so, uh, there are different programs and things, of course, that we are, that we are funding, but it goes into our general fund, for those.
And we do start planning those each quarter, looking at them with our CPA and their funds we're taking in, so.
Perfect.
Uh, and actually, as I said, we're gonna build a store out at Rosewood, which is gonna go from a thousand square foot store in the shopping center to about six thousand square feet, so you can imagine what the increase that would be.
Does that one annex into the city?
Um, I think so.
I think so too.
I'm pretty sure it is. And then, uh, of course, uh, if we build a warehouse and the office out there, that, of course, it doesn't sell, but that will give us more room for production, and we're looking at hopefully opening another one in Marmot, which I know that's, uh, is in the satellite annexation.
But it's, it's something that, uh.
Which we don't have to be annexed, we can be anywhere in the county, but it would be inside the city's jurisdiction.
Well, my, my goal is to see this whole county grow and expand and be successful, so you're not gonna hear me, you know, upset if Eureka, Pharaoh Grant, anybody gets a win, so.
I got you, well, anyway, we're here to help, and y'all feel free to come by and visit, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll keep moving. Uh, Ms. Beckton, I know I saw you, there we are, perfect. If you would come forward and, uh, discuss the Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities, programs that are going on, and what, uh, what we need to know and how we can better support you. And thank you again for making some time for tonight.
Well, Mayor Gayler and Mayor Protem Matthews, council members, thank you for, um, inviting me to share tonight on perhaps, on behalf of Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities. Um, uh, on behalf of myself and my co-chair, Mr. Johnny Holmes, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to always talk about what we're doing. So just to remind everyone about who we are and what we do, of course, we are, um, charged with, uh, planning, conducting, publicizing activities that always promote the well-being of persons with disabilities. We are a membership of sixteen. Um, what we do is, uh, promote and establish improvement of rehabilitation, recreational act, uh, recreational facilities, support and promote legislation, uh, as it pertains to what's in the best interest of individuals who have disabilities, and of course, to advise the, the city council, uh, regarding any goals and recommendations that we may have. And you can see a list of things here that are a part of that, uh, process. So what we have been up to lately, uh, we stay pretty busy. And, uh, this, uh, slide here is just an example of how we are supporting our community. Wayne Opportunity Center reached out to us and asked if there was any way we could help them with the donation of rods and reels so that their consumers could go fishing. And so we were happy to, um, to oblige them in that, and you can see, uh, the Mighty Catch that one of those young gentlemen made there. Uh, we are always excited to see, uh, how our efforts affect the individuals, so we were really happy to have them, them share these, these photos with us. Uh, we also do a lot of outreach, we were able to participate this year in the, uh, a day in the park. Uh, we were, um, had a booth there, and we were able to, um, share some of our delicious Mount Olive pickles there, and they donated the pickles and some stickers, and we were able to, to give those out. And they were gone very quickly, as a matter of fact. If we could have sell, sold the pickle juice or given away the pickle juice, I think they'd have taken that too. But we were so happy to be a part of that and to share with the community, again, what we do and, and what, and that we're here to, um, advocate for persons with disabilities. In the area of educating, um, we have been able to include information, educational material in the, uh, City of Goldsboro's newsletter that goes out, I believe, quarterly. Um, we try to determine topics of interest. This last, uh, quarter, we sent out information on ADA Americans with Disabilities Act, and we received a good bit of feedback from business owners, how much they appreciated having that information in the material. So we will continue to do that, we continue to, um, entertain any opportunity to speak at civic groups. Uh, in the past, we have spoken, uh, with, uh, the Kiwanis, the Ruhrton Club, uh, several other, um, civic groups as well. And of course, we do have a Facebook page that, uh, we keep up to date and always, uh, are glad to share information on that as well. Another, uh, special event that we have actually coming up is our annual awards. This year, we will be, um, conducting that event on October seventeenth. We are hoping to do that at Paramount, Paramount Theater. Uh, there's a few logistics that we're working through right now, but we are anticipating, um, to have a good, uh, response there. Uh, you can see here on the slide, um, the various categories, uh, where individuals can nominate, uh, folk, uh, in those particular categories, and then our membership, uh, reviews those, and, oh, those awards are assigned accordingly. One of the big, big things that we are still, um, working on is advocating for some accessible parking. This is kind of a, a new thing, and we have, uh, this was brought up to our committee, and so we took charge of that, and, uh, were able to collaborate with the engineering and planning departments to discuss increasing the accessibility for handicap parking on Center Street. And you can see here, um, two additional parallel handicap spaces on the two-hundred block, which is right here, uh, around City Hall. Uh, we're also looking at, um, including, uh, four additional angled, uh, spaces down at the one-hundred block of Center Street, down at the south end. We are also proposing six additional spaces, uh, to be added somewhere on Center Street. Uh, one of the other things that, um, we discussed was, uh, with the handicap signs, uh, parking signs that, you know, some of the trees, you know, as they grow, they tend to cover, so they're not always visible. So making sure, if we could, that those, uh, signs, uh, the signage there is, is quite visible for our, our patrons that are using those parking spaces, especially when we have, uh, major events, uh, down at the Paramount or at the Hub. So that's one of the latest projects that we have been working, working on. And we have not forgotten our, uh, our goal of providing handicap accessible playground equipment. Uh, again, our focus is at North End Park. Um, we have had brought to light some other possible opportunities for funding, and so we are in the process of investigating those and hoping that they will, uh, come to fruition. And, uh, even setting our sights a little higher than just North End, uh, with other possibilities of increasing, um, playground space, adaptive playground space in other, uh, heavily trafficked areas like Herman Park, and, uh, some other things that, that, uh, have come to light that we're, uh, still in the process of, of looking into. So that is, uh, still first and foremost, um, on our agenda to try to see that, see that through. And we meet again every third Thursday of the month from twelve to one, here in this room, as a matter of fact. Um, and we do appreciate Mayor Protem Matthews for being on that committee with us, and, um, Ms. Crystal Fuller, who acts as the liaison, uh, for that group. And, um, that is all that I have to present to you at this time. Be glad to entertain any questions.
I'll just lead while everyone collects their thoughts, I, I love it, I so appreciate what you do. And, and advocacy can become exhausting, but don't stop, because it, it is heard, and it does register, and then it goes into a budget cycle, and it goes, and, and things take forever, and no one lacks patience more than me, which I have to fake constantly. But what I will say, little wins, not that, they, little wins don't substitute for big wins, but little wins, things like the sidewalk that goes all the way to the, over, uh, Herman Park, between the circle with, uh, the Donzla Park statue, and then the sidewalk that goes over to the, the playground. Little things like that. Keeping it on the radar of knowing that when we can find the grants, and when we can set aside the money to do a proper inclusive play area at one of our major parks, because you're keeping it on the radar, it will happen, it will happen.
Oh, we have full confidence.
Yeah, it's going to happen. It's a matter of keeping it on the radar so that when, when the right window opens, folks realize it and see it and sees it. And it's going to happen, the same thing with, uh, with parking. You know, it may be that we, you know, look at it, and in the interest of making sure that there's van accessibility, and maybe it makes more sense for it to be in one of the off streets right at the sidewalk or something like that. But again, those are things that we want to hear, because we want this to be a, a city where that everyone gets to live, work, and play. And it, it, it will register, don't, don't give in, don't give up, you have our ear, you absolutely have my ear. And, um, I appreciate all the time that you've put into this, because it does make a difference.
Thank you so much. We unfortunately were not able to, uh, have our mayor's walk this year because of the weather. Um, but it did cause us to consider, uh, for next year, which it would be May seventh of next year, um, to go ahead and, uh, build in a rain date. So we have, our committee has agreed to do that, I don't think we've done that in the past, but, uh, we definitely, because we had so many people who were so disappointed that, that that didn't take place, and of course, we cannot control the weather, so.
Well, I do appreciate it. Counsel, open up for any other co- thoughts, comments, concerns, please, Pritha.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chairwoman, and thank you, Ms. Felicia, for all you do for that council as well. But, um, can you share with everyone how they can donate to our efforts for the all-inclusive playground?
Do you want to, can I turn that to you? I'm assuming that comes through, um, Crystal, or does that come through you?
Uh, no, you can, anyone can make a check payable to the City of Goldsboro, the Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities. And in your memo line, um, please designate or specify that it's for the all-inclusive playground, and thank you, Madam Protem.
And we do invite all of you to participate in our, um, awards banquet next, next month. Um, I'm sure information will go out to all of you, and we would love to have you participate in that as well.
Uh, anyone who needs a, a good example of what a truly inclusive play area can look like, go to Pullman Park in Raleigh. Uh, there's plenty of places where that it's designed to be an inclusive swing that everyone is swinging on, everyone is using. It's a fantastic example.
Even closer than Raleigh, there's Noah's Ark in Wilton, it's beautiful.
They, they're getting enough good press, we're going, they're getting like a ball team or something. Thank you. Counsel, any other comments, questions? Thank you so much. All right, speaking of recreation, this works out well, Archbishop Slater, if you'd come forward, talk to us about the Recreation Advisory Commission.
Sure, my pleasure. First of all, good evening. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members, thank you so much for us to get a chance to share with us what we've been doing. I don't know what that was, but, oh. All righty. Uh, a couple of things took place, uh, I just came on to the department, um, into Recreation Advisory Committee. Myself and Larry Gerard was already there, and we came on, we found out we had to do some restructuring. That was the first part that we had to do, cause found out we didn't have very many meetings, because we could not meet a quorum. So the earlier part, what we did with the restructuring, we dealt with the business aspect of the, the, the committee. Three things we looked at, commitment, that we needed people to be committed to come in and make sure we had a quorum. We succeeded in that. Effective communication, I don't have a problem calling you to find out if you're coming to the meeting or not. And if they're not coming, why? Even though this is voluntarily, that you're coming to want to do it, but if you're gonna be committed, we made sure that we were also talking to each other. And of course, accountability, when we have a meeting assigned that starts at six o'clock, we start within, to try to, try to start within five minutes of that six o'clock mark. And also, our city councilman, um, in his absence, Mr. White has been coming to our meetings, as well as staff been provided by Ms. Felicia, and, and when she was out, she said, capable. she said capable staff members to come and just oversee what we've been doing. Doing that, one of the first assessments we noticed that we were concerned about as well as everyone else in the city was our youth. We have our youth on our summer programs, how they wanted to get involved in some of our activities and programs that the city offers, but some couldn't. And so, we were trying to find out why they couldn't. We found out sometimes that some of the larger families could not afford to send all their children to be a part of what the city was offering. So, we brought our minds together. First, the problem that we dealt with was finding out how we could help. We found a solution. Solution was to start a scholarship fund that we're preparing for 2025. We already have it already designed, we already have put out, we already spoke to the powers that be. We have a special line item that anybody can donate. I hope you understand that anybody means you too, can donate to the fund that we can begin to help some of our kids, keep them off the street, possibly give them a new idea besides attacking each other, as well as the community. So, we, we did that. We have that already set up. We have the paperwork ready to go. We also found out that we have a line item, it will become a line item through, and that none of the members would be touching the monies, but they can go ahead and donate to the city, to the city of Goldsboro. And we were targeting some of our businesses who want to see our kids off the streets. We want to see some of the kids doing some things constructively. And there's been a concern with some of the members that we don't use, we don't have enough kids coming in. But our facilities cannot hold as many kids that we would desire them to be, let alone, we don't have enough staff. That's another segue that we also noted. And I think that's a burden that we've been seeing throughout the city. We need more staffing. You know, with staffing comes more money, comes more responsibility. We understand that. So, it's just advisement in that. But we also are looking to find out what we can do. We realize that we need the comprehensive plan. We don't have a plan. We come, well, personally, I come from a mindset of without the vision, people perish. We need a vision to find out where we're going, what we're going to do. What is the city's idea? What is the parks going to look like? We, we made the progress with the condemning of the Herman Park Center, but the new building may not be the best right there because the city of Goldsboro is changing. It, the shape is changing. So, we need to find out, is that going to be the place that we rebuild? We need to find out demographically, who are we going to be able to meet the most? Who are we going to help the most? We noticed that in District Six really doesn't have someplace for the kids to go instead of coming all the way across town back into this, to the main areas. Where else we do? How can we reach the whole community? How can we reach the city of Goldsboro? So, we did some things. A couple of members went out. We went to visit the, the parks. We went to every park. Mr. Gerard and myself, I know him and I went. We even went to a park we thought was the city's and found out it wasn't the city's. We went to Waynesboro Park. I was fussing. Said, why the, the walls falling down? What's going on? So, by the time I talked to Ms. Felicia, said, that's not our, that's not our business. And so, she corrected us on that. So, overall, the parks look great. We went to all of them. Berkeley Park, we noticed that it needed some, some parking potholes that were there. And they said, that's on the, I, that's on the radar. We're going to be able to do something with that in the time. The last thing, next meeting, we're going to be going out with Mr. Russell, one of the staff. We're going to be taking us to all the parks and we're going to go collectively, I believe, in a, in a bus that we can go and walk together and we can begin to see for ourselves what their concern is, what staff's concern, what's our concern, and what we can do together. So, we're excited about going and being a part of, being a part of the community, helping out, what can we do with the city of Goldsboro. But with no one else likes it, we're growing at a, at a number that I don't know if we're going to be able to handle it head-on. We're going to have to get creative because the kids are here and we're bringing in new kids. And, and so, what do we do with them? How do we train them? So, these are some of the things that we've been doing as a Recreation Advisory Committee. Any questions for me at this point?
If you don't mind, this may be a question for Ms. Felicia. But, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that we're going to be moving forward with, how does that work or maybe, Matt, if that's something that you'd rather, you know, comment on later on, I don't want to steal the thunder, I'm just, what is the process for that? Because I agree, District Six, we got to get something over there. But, we also are overprogrammed for our budget right now in square footage. So, how do we, how do we simultaneously move and restructure while also getting into something that we can afford to do well consistently?
So, those are very good questions, Mayor. And that's why we were ten-plus years behind on a comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which inhibited a lot of our ability to get funding. So, it'll answer a lot of those questions such as park space needs, staff needs in terms of administrative spaces, recreation facilities, programming, and all those, that roadmap that we need now that we are growing to answer a lot of those questions and start planning for the future. So, it's a good time for us to kind of assess those things and determine the best way forward because we are growing and we do need to reinvest it back in some of our parks because they have been a little, some of them are a little bit neglected, so we need to do that.
And the greenway trails and things that y'all also follow, and y'all's purview realizes a lot. Counsel, any other, sorry, go ahead.
The other part of, even with the greenway, I think we went on the greenway paths. We took a look at some of those. The biggest thing we're running into, some of the grass is not kept. And when we did our investigation, sometimes we don't have the personnel or the equipment is breaking down again, which is consistent because we hadn't had the money to replace the equipment. So, therefore, everything goes back across to the bottom line. But this is something to look for the future, what we're going to need. It's more personnel for keeping the grounds up and as well as the personnel, as well as the equipment to do it. So, in all I get, I actually need to consider everything that we're going to do. And we're going to be moving some things and bringing some things to you as well as we continue.
And I've also been approached by a number of groups that wonder how they can volunteer with parks and do greenway cleanup days and do different things. And, and, you know, for the first few months, we've had to focus on some kind of foundational things, but we've gotten to the point where those knobs and levers have been adjusted and now it's time to focus on some things that are forward-facing and in a, in a different way, more of a fun way. Again, just kind of speaking for myself, not putting words in council members' mouth. Counsel, comments, questions? I don't mean to, Protem and then Counsel One Weeks.
Thank you, Bishop Slater. Do the pools fall under your advisory?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Have you guys given any discussion as to how we're going to ensure that pools are open and maintenance and?
We, it came up. We looked at it. Some of them need to be renovated. We need some things that, even those parking lots need some attention. We went to, I think, two of them. I think we only have two, Minniewill and Peacock. And we went to those and we've seen some things that we might need to even beautify it and even make it accessible. But again, it's going to go back to the bottom line. We're going to need some more monies toward that area. And instead of, one of the things I think we need to be careful of, how we rob Peter to pay Paul. We got to be careful pulling our people too thin because what we're watching is, you know, when you give new assignments, you take from one area because we have it, but then you wear that employee out. And then they, then we have to deal with burnout. Then we start talking about people getting hurt and that's a whole nother issue. That, so one thing, it's like a domino effect. We got to be concerned about each time, how we're going to approach this. Because I think right now, we're teeter-totting with the staff, even with Parks and Recs, even dealing with the pools and dealing with it. Because there's always something new that's coming on. Well, we didn't deal with that before, but now we do. There's always something trying to add. Hopefully, trying to save some, but it may cost us later on. And that's just a thought.
So, and this may be for Matt or even Ms. Felicia. With our park plan that we're coming up with, will that include the pools? And I'm saying this because I do not want another pool season that Minniewill Pool is either delayed or not open for whatever reason. So, I, I'm hoping that the, the pools will be included in that plan so that this doesn't continue to happen.
Yes, and I think they will, but I would like Felicia to answer that question because this is going to be her master plan that they've started. And I think it's an exciting time for her because she gets to put her two cents in what she's been dreaming about and what she knows she needs.
Yes. Good evening, Counsel. Thank you for the question. Yes, the comprehensive master plan is going to cover the pools, the parks, facilities, staff. It's going to cover everything. And what the comprehensive parks master plan is looking at, is looking at our facilities. It's going to be giving suggestions on what we need to plan ahead for. What, what some people may not remember or even think about is our two pools, Peacock and Minniewill Pool, they are each both fifty-plus years old. We've put a whole lot of loving in trying to keep those pools up. And I haven't put in my budget, build a new pool in Minniewill Park because we're trying to keep the pools up. So, it's a question of, and this is what the master plan is going to look at. Would it be more cost-efficient for us to build a new pool or to continue to work on the current pools we have so long as we keep up with our maintenance? The issue with Minniewill Pool this year is, you know, we were trying to get it replastered. We've known, we, me, Felicia, I have known for at least two years, we would need to replaster that pool in order to continue to pass inspection. When I put it in a budget, it would be, how bad is it? Can we pass inspection this year? Yes, we can, but we need to look forward to, you know, planning to replaster the pool. And it just came up that this year, it was like, we need to replaster the pool. You know, I'm, I'm not even going to try to get Environmental Health to come out and pass us an inspection. So, that's where the whole replastering came into play. And with the company we chose, right or wrong, they had some personnel issues, so that delayed the process. With all that said, and I know we're towards the end of our pool season, I am happy to report and I had shared with Matt, the bonding coat for the pool went down today, if I'm not mistaken. And then we'll be replastering, the actual replastering, this week. Like I said, it's a little late, but moving forward, summer season 2025, we should have no issues at Minniewill Pool because not only did we get the pool replastered, we also got the sand changed out and sand filters because they go hand in hand.
Thank you.
Counsel One Weeks and then, Counsel One Weeks, Florence.
So, I had a question that I think either one of you may could help me with. So, I was looking at the scholarships that you were asking for and then Mayor Protem had asked if you guys would touch base on how people could donate for the playground. My question is, do we have a 501(c)(3) established with the city so that people could send designated gifts in, businesses and churches or donors if they were interested? Is there any type of 501(c)(3) because we're asking people to contribute? Most likely, our contributions would increase if we could establish some type of 501(c)(3) where people could send designated gifts into.
Okay, I'll answer that. Currently, we do not have a 501(c)(3), but we do have a designated funding line similar to the previous committee. So, what that means is, if somebody were to send a check in, you know, say for the youth scholarship fund, it goes into that line. It does not go into the general fund to be spread out, whatever. It goes into this specific line and it's just going to be used for youth program scholarships.
Matt, just a recommendation with the finance department. If we could establish a small 501(c)(3) by the city that anybody, a business, a church, a donor, could make a foundation, could make a beneficiary, could make a 501(c), a tax deductible contribution, and then they could designate their gift. Do they want it to go to scholarships? Do they want it to go to the playground? I will tell you, then your donations would increase if you could provide a tax deductible receipt as IRS regulations allow.
Thank you. And that, and to that point, that's something that I very much has stood, has stood on as well, is that I want to see a Parks and Rec Foundation. I will note that if you make a contribution now, shameless plug for anyone watching, it's still tax deductible. So, you still get the same benefit if that is a thing. However, I'm right there with you. I think that having a Parks and Rec Foundation, where that we can start, you know, literally, almost like, you know, you have the DGDC that supports the Downtown Development Office. You got the Paramount Foundation or that supports the Paramount. You've got the, you've Goldsboro Golf Association that supports, you know, you've got these different things, solicit volunteers. I want to see, I want to see sponsorship names on equipment and, and facilities. You know, there's, there's nothing stopping us from doing it if we're, if we're aggressive and willing to do it. And I think there are folks that would love to leave a legacy for a loved one by putting in, putting naming rights on, on a, a piece of accessible play gear. I think there's, there are options out there. I, I think I remember a couple of years ago, and actually, Felicia, it was you that was, that was up here and you said, does the city want us out fundraising? And at the time, I remember the comment going, no, you know, probably not. And I remember thinking ever since then, maybe so. Even if that means it is the politicos that are the ones having to go out and do the fundraising instead of, instead of, I'm, I'm okay with that too. But there are models where it's already happening. And as long as it's done in a respectful way, I'm, I'm all for it. I, I want to give this community every possible chance to put their names on positive things. Just my two cents. Didn't mean to go down a rabbit hole there. Counsel One Weeks, did you have anything else before I sort of stole your thunder? I apologize for that.
I'll definitely make a note, note that. I've seen that in other places, whether it's Friends of the Library, Friends of the Parks and, and the Advisory Board can sort of, sort of take the lead on being the person or group that sort of manages the nonprofit with the staff. Very doable.
Counsel, any other comments, questions, concerns? It's going to be a busy year for, for P and R. I'm glad for it.
Yeah, it's going to be great.
Thank you for, thank you for your time being willing to do this. We needed, we needed the right guy in the right spot at the right time and it lined up.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Counsel, we will move into new business. So, we've concluded all of the different reports. Appreciate everyone, everyone's attentiveness for this one. So, Chief, I appreciate you being willing to take a little bit of time this evening. This is the discussion on the nuisance abatement process. We have, we have questions and concerns both on the residential side as well as the general commercial entity side. And I appreciate you being willing to kind of walk us through this process, how it goes, the timeline and where it starts. Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor, and Council members.
Good evening, Chairwoman.
I was asked to put a presentation together on nuisance abatement. This is going to be a very broad presentation for nuisance abatement. And I guess it's, what I hope everybody gets out of this is nuisance abatement is not always a responsibility of law enforcement. The city has a responsibility as well, planning, inspections. So, this is kind of my goal here is that it's, it's bigger than just law enforcement. If I can get this to work, we'll proceed. There we go. So, what is nuisance abatement? Nuisance abatement is a process to address properties that pose a threat to public health, safety, and welfare. Nuisance abatement is, also focuses on properties that are neglected, abandoned, or involved in illegal activities. And just having said that on this first slide, I'm sure everybody in here is thinking of placing properties that fall into those categories. Key objectives when you do a nuisance abatement: protect the community, safety, ensure properties do not endanger residents or visitors, enhance property values is another objective, maintain or increase the value surrounding these properties, and also to promote well-being, community well-being, foster a safe, clean, and healthy environment for your citizens. Types of nuisances: public health nuisances such as unsanitary conditions, vermin infestation, stagnant water. I think we've all seen properties there that are abandoned, they've got standing water, whether it's from tires or barrels or stuff like that on the property, that would qualify. Safety hazards, dilapidated structures, unsecured buildings, fire hazards, and also illegal activities, drug-related activities, gambling, chronic disturbances, prostitution, you name it, it falls into that category. So, when you do a nuisance abatement, there's a legal framework. Currently, we have city ordinances in place. I think they're Chapter 96, I think it is, relevant city codes and regulations to govern nuisance abatement. Some of those policies or ordinances could be antiquated and they need to be reviewed and updated. There's also state law, Chapter 19, I think, that empowers local authorities to address these nuisances. And then you've got the due process for the property owners, the business owners, to ensure property owners are notified and given the opportunity to correct the issue. Nuisance abatement process, first you have to do identification. Identification is where residents, visitors notice a problem, neighbors, see a problem in their neighborhood, who do they notify? Nine times out of ten, notification will come into the police department. It's just as the police department sometimes falls under, if we don't know who to report the problem to, let's report it to the police. And then our responsibility at that point is, is the police department determines who is the next person that needs to be involved in this. It's not always going to be a law enforcement to get issue. It may need to go to code enforcement, or it may need to go to inspections. And I think we have recently worked with Matt and the council to try to identify a quicker avenue to be able to push out these nuisances so we can work them more effectively and efficiently than we have in the past. Then we do an investigation. Then we do an investigation. And again, the investigation could be a police department investigation, or it could be inspections to assess the severity of the nuisance. And they'll go onto the site, onto the property locations, and then determine and see for theirself through the investigation whether it in fact meets the requirements of a nuisance. Notification is issuing a notice to the property owner detailing the violations and required actions. Currently, what we have in place is, I think you've heard us speak of it before, is the blight letter that comes from City Hall. And that goes out to the owner basically saying that your business or your property is potentially contributing to the blight in the neighborhood or could be contributing to the crime in the neighborhood. And we need you to reach out to, whether it's the police chief or inspections, so we can assist you in trying to work through this process. And then again, the property owners are allowed a correction period, allowing the property owner time to remedy the situation. And then if nothing's done, take enforcement. And the enforcement can be that the city goes in and does their cleanup. Then they can attach the cost of the cleanup to the property and I guess put a lien on the property. Or you'll get law enforcement will go in if it's of criminal nature and then we can go in and collect the evidence, do the investigation, and then pursue it through the courts to get some sort of potential injunction against the property or property owners. Again, enforcement actions, administrative remedies, fines, penalties, or liens placed on property. Judicial remedies is court orders for property cleanup, repair, demolition. And then emergency actions is immediate intervention in cases posing an urgent threat to public safety. And there'll be an example here where we had to do that. Challenges for nuisance abatement? Property owner resistance, non-compliance, legal challenges, absentee owners. We have a lot of properties in Golds where they have absentee owners. Resource allocation, it takes time and money and resources to be able to do abatement. Public perception, balancing the community expectations and what legal constraints. There, I think, informing the community of what's going on or why there's some abatements that have been on the books for a while or have been known for a while to let them know this thing doesn't, abatements don't happen overnight. I think the last abatement that we did, and you'll see again in just a minute, was close to two years to be able to successfully abate the property. This is the example, I'm sure several of you are aware. Back in 2016 or 2017, City Goals successfully conducted a nuisance abatement against a local hotel that had become a hotspot for criminal activity and a source of significant concerns for the community. Over the course of several months, the city received numerous complaints from residents and businesses about ongoing issues at the hotel, including drug activity, prostitution, and frequent disturbances. The Goldsboro Police Department responded by launching a thorough investigation, collecting vital evidence and conducting surveillance operations. These efforts culminated in the execution of a search warrant and the arrest of several individuals involved in illegal activities at the hotel. Following these law enforcement actions, the city inspections department, in collaboration with the fire department, conducted an in-depth assessment of the hotel. They discovered multiple safety violations, which ultimately led to the closure of the hotel to protect public safety. Understanding the impact of the closure on the residents who were living at the hotel, the city took extra steps to ensure they were provided with alternative housing options, demonstrating a commitment to their well-being throughout the process. To further support the efforts, the Goldsboro Police Department set a formal request to the North Carolina Alcohol Law Enforcement, or ALE, abatement team for assistance. This collaboration initiated a comprehensive 14-month investigation into the hotel's operation. The investigation provided substantial evidence leading to a court ruling that imposed strict restrictions on the hotel, effectively preventing it from continuing to operate as a public nuisance. The successful nuisance abatement not only resolved the immediate issue at the hotel, but also highlighted the city of Goldsboro's dedication to maintain a safe and secure environment for its residents. The combined efforts of local law enforcement, city officials, and North Carolina ALE were instrumental in restoring peace and safety to the community. Again, this, these don't happen overnight. The public perception, sometimes it's, the problem is there. And then when you take a look at the problem and try to collect evidence, it doesn't meet the threshold of a nuisance abatement per se. But there's other avenues, again, that we can pursue to effectively have the same outcome as a nuisance abatement. Community involvement, education and outreach, outreach, informing the residents about how to report nuisances. Again, nine times out of 10, your nuisances will be reported initially to the police department. And then we can push it to whatever divisions within the city that is going to be primarily responsible. Collaboration, working with community groups, police, and other stakeholders. I've said it before, I'm not in the business to shut down businesses. I'm not in the business to take properties. But if we identify that these properties or businesses are contributing to problems in the neighborhoods, then we need to address them. And we will. And prevention, encouraging property owners upkeep and timely maintenance. Benefits of effective nuisance abatement, improved quality of life, safer, cleaner neighborhoods, economic growth, growth, increased property values, attractiveness for new investments, and public confidence, trust in the city's commitment to maintaining community standards. What are the next steps? Council support, requests for approval or resources or policy changes to enhance abatement efforts. Again, we have, potentially have ordinances on the books that are old and antiquated. So we would have to come back before you for approval to make those changes. When budget time rolls around, there may be cases to where we're asking for additional funding, not just the police department, but other city entities to assist with abatement, demolition of properties. So that would be our ask, is council support, and I believe we've got council support. Ongoing monitoring, implementing systems for tracking, responding to nuisance reports. Again, that's something we're trying to, to work on now and trying to identify the best way to do it. Again, sending it through the police department isn't always the most efficient or effective way to do it. But we're going to work to try to get a better plan in place. And then community engagement, expanding outreach efforts to keep the public informed and involved. Probably didn't mean to do that. Questions? Sorry.
So Chief, when you get into a property that, let's just say one that is an operating business, at what point do you go after, for example, their business registration, like their business license inside, inside the city? As opposed to a criminal process towards the owners? How, how do, how do those processes overlap?
Well, I mean, if we go into a business that we've got to complain against, we see them doing, whether it's underage sales of alcohol, then we, we reach out to ALE or the alcohol board for them to go in and do their investigation, to shut them down. Again, if we go into a property, we see sub standards such as it's not maintained well, this, you know, the interior's compromised. And we would turn that over to inspections, then they can come in and potentially, I guess, the certificate of occupancy can be pulled, for lack of a better term. But again, it's knowing who to contact and do it quickly to make sure that we get it done. But we can go in there and find violations that'll affect their, whether it's their liquor license, beer license, and what they can do inside the property.
Mayor, the question really sort of depends upon the circumstances in the business, or whether it's a residence or not as well. If you have a business where there's a lot of crime taking place, for instance, you have a store corner of Elm Street, Slough Street. A lot of crime and things take place at that store. If there's enough that rises to a certain level, then you can go under chapter 19 and file a public nuisance action and shut the place down. Ultimately, you have the property seized, but when that property is seized, it's given to the local school board. Sometimes the school board don't want it. So you have to sort of balance that out. But if you have a process to go through before you can get to that point, but you can shut the business down, which is the case study that the chief gave back in 2017, that was that one that, you know, that we were shut down under chapter 19. A great resource is the nuisance abatement team from the ALE office. I've worked, worked with them quite frequently, and whether it's a drug house. But they do a great job in gathering the affidavits that are needed and that evidence, because this is what they do all the time and all over the state. But if you have their availability, they can go in and do the necessary steps so that when they bring everything to you, you're actually ready to take legal action to shut it down. They do a good job of getting all that prepared. I've assisted in with shutting down a hotel in Jacksonville. This is the sheriff to shut down a drug house in Kinston last summer. So it just depends again on the circumstances.
Thank you.
But aside from that, what he was talking about as far as the other nuisances, where you have dilapidated housing, that's going to follow the code enforcement. We do have ordinances in place that can be pursued that way to come before you to give it a resolution of demolition. But I think you set funds, you know, in the budget for that. If you don't set funds, they can't do anything about it. But I think you have put funds in for this year. You just have to have your code enforcement go through that process. It's already on the books. Sorry for my interjection.
No, I, I appreciate it, I appreciate it. This is, you know, we sent out some letters. And I'll just speak for me, I, I was one of the signatories on me. And if we follow up that with, with a response, then we, we're sending a message. If we don't, we're sending a message. And, you know, there are certain parts of the city that have dealt with the exact same issues over and over and over again as long as I've been alive. And I think that's long enough. And so I appreciate this council being willing to put some pressure on folks. Because as you said, I'm an entrepreneurial guy to my core. But you're stunting entrepreneurship if you allow someone to take over an area in a way that doesn't spur more development, more investment. It doesn't have to be high, high dollar investment. I'm just talking about activity. And so, I appreciate, I appreciate that.
Counsel, comments, questions? I know there are going to be some. Please.
This, this may be a question for our attorney, or maybe chief. But say, for example, we have a home people are living in, and they may have lights legally or illegally, I'm not sure. But there, there's no water, there's been no water for years. And if they're using the restroom outside in the backyard, would that be considered a public health nuisance? And if so, how do we approach that?
The code enforcement office needs to pursue that, as well as the health department can pursue that. The health department has its own avenue, which is, does follow up in the city, that's the county.
So do you know who to contact that, that we could contact that health department?
If code enforcement contacted Andrew Neil, he could contact him. I don't deal legally with health departments, I really don't know.
Okay. And then the, the only other question I have is for Chief, I guess. So after, like the mayor said, we, you guys sent out the letters to some businesses. So after you reach out, what's the timeframe to hear back from the owners before the next step? And does that letter go out to the owner of the actual building or the owner of the actual business? If it's someone leasing that business from the owner, the actual building owner?
My understanding is, is that we check GIS and get the owner's information, and the letter goes to the owner.
It went to the, the tax tracker owner, right?
I did not see that, I saw the letter, but it has got to go to the owner, that's the responsible party. And then you go through the process. And the code enforcement has to take it through the step-by-step process straight according to our code. And we have to have hearings on that too. So, and we're working on getting all that process back in place because it really hasn't been done around here. And now we're having to start redoing all those things, so.
Yes, I'm just curious, does anyone know what was the timeframe? After that first letter goes out, do you give that business, like what amount of time do you give that business to respond before you move?
I don't think on the, on the letter, I don't think there is a timeframe. Typically, in the past 30 to 60 days. I think in this case, we've gone over 60. And then what I would recommend doing, or what I can do, is even though they don't respond, at least make a site visit to try to get some conversation going at that point. Totally willing to do that, and if that generates some conversation, then obviously we can work it that way. Now, I know for the two letters that went out, there has been no follow-up from me or my office. Certainly don't mind doing that, but it's just a matter of doing a site visit. And that's a, I guess I don't technically have to do that, but I just think it's good business sense to at least make an attempt in person to try to facilitate a conversation.
And I'll, I'll point out that, again, not, not trying to call names right now, but one of, one of these stores that didn't receive a letter did, did try, and I think has tried. It's, it's a fairly, fairly low bar to simply run folks off if they're, if they're loitering. So I appreciate that, I really do. Because I'm not asking folks to be incredibly capital intense in their response, that's unfair. I'm just simply asking them to be good, you know, be, be good neighbors to the community.
Are the letters certified? Do they have to sign for anything? I mean, it's kind of naive for us to think that it possibly got into the hands of the owner. Like, do we do a paper trail in terms of having a signature, having someone sign?
No, once we got into kind of court process, obviously you'd have to go through service. And these letters to that point, actually two really good points from the, from the council and from the Protem. Next ones that go out, if and when, carbon copy the actual address. I think that's an obvious. And then second, send them certified. I think that's an obvious. I think both of y'all raised excellent points.
We do send our code enforcement letters out certified mail as a standard practice. And, you know, what you do is you have 30 days, 45 days to comply. And then you have an administrative hearing. And we just haven't really been doing, one of the, we're down a code enforcement person, we've been trying heavily recruiting. We haven't, haven't filled that position yet, but we hope too soon. But that's the process. And then, once we get through that process and they, they don't comply, we can do administrative fines. And, you know, then it goes up to a certain point, we can do liens on the property. It depends on each case, but that's the general process for how that nuisance abatement works with, with the housing and of it. And also with any other types of nuisance in general.
I'd just say, chapter 19 doesn't have those sort of things built in, the code does, for enforcement proceedings, whether it's dilapidation, those kind of things. But if we're talking about a business that's going to become a public nuisance because of illegal activity taking place, you're going to have some period of time, and investigations are going to have to come up with enough violations where a judge is going to shut it down. So you have to have some period of time where that's taking place. You do give them notice, but what you, what the ALE team wants to do is bring them in to sit down with the police chief. And usually, if I'm called in to help, then, then I will sit down, I'll be there present at the same time. And the owner comes in and it is a certified letter to send out, give them notice that the police chief was to meet with them. To give them an opportunity to start taking steps to not let these certain people come to the business, while the certain people stay at the hotel, wherever it might be, to clean it up. If that evidence is not seen, that's when the lawsuit is filed, to shut that business down. Again, that's different when we talk to our residences, unless the residences are rising to the level of public nuisance, where there's drug activity taking place or something of that nature. That's your question.
Another thing that I want the board to kind of think of, one thing that Chief mentioned, is that sometimes, you know, we're looking at it through a different lens. We can see all these things happening at a store in particular, but it doesn't necessarily meet the requirement of an abatement. So, you know, my challenge to the board is, what do we do as a council or as a city to support that entity if it doesn't meet that process? Like, what other innovative process can we come up with to support the efforts of cleaning up that environment if it doesn't meet those requirements to pursue shutting them down? Because I think that is a possibility in some instances where it does not meet the criteria to do that.
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple that, that currently are, are under question or under scrutiny that don't, in my opinion, they don't meet the level of an abatement. But just because they don't meet the level of an abatement, I don't think that's a reason not to get into a conversation with them, or at least visit with the owner or the, or the manager and say, hey, look, this is an abatement. You're not there yet, but you will be if you continue down this road, and let's have a discussion. And in the past, when we've tried that, the business owners or the managers have been very receptive. And they'll want, you know, you need to post no loitering, you know, no loitering signs. When officers rise by and see people congregating, that allow us to get out and talk with them and move them on without you being, it helps. But we've got to get that initial conversation going, and in some cases, we do. And then we'll continue to try. Because again, a lot of these, not a lot, but the ones we're looking at right now, they don't quite rise to the level of an abatement. But they're getting very close, and I think it's only fair that we give the managers or owners an opportunity to, to turn it around.
But Chief, I'd like to be a part of any conversation happening in District 4, if that's okay.
Okay, absolutely.
Counsel, uh, pro, uh, counsel?
Along the lines of Protem's ask and, and comments, is it possible, and this is a question, I guess, for us or for Matt, our manager, sorry. Is it possible that in our update that we receive every so often, that we could be updated as a council to be kept in the loop with who, what, what's going on? Like, you know, which businesses or which properties that are getting attention and where that, that process is? Just like a running tab, so to speak, so that we have something as a council that we can reference to know, not only if, if there's a hotspot we're not aware of, but when we do become aware of it, what's going on with it, so we know. Is that possible, just to have a little update once a month or? That's a great idea. I can add that, that to the planning department reports, part of planning and code enforcement. Where I'll give you a running tab of the code enforcement activities that they do, whether they be nuisance abatement like yard, junk vehicles, those kind of things.
Chief, real quick, because I can't remember, that weekly report that's on your website that talks about where the crime has been or where the activity has been that week? You know, there's a, there's a tab that you can go to? You know, there's a, there's a tab that you can go to and you can see where the activity has happened. It's like a, a...
Are you talking the crime mapping or?
Yeah, the crime mapping.
Okay.
Would that stuff be on the crime mapping? Like, kind of like what Councilwoman Boyer was saying, could we see?
Some of it will, but I, forgive me for saying this. I don't put a lot of stock in that crime mapping for the updates. Aren't really as frequent as I would like to see them. What's there is accurate. It's just if you look at it today, it may not have certain things that happened in the last twenty-four, forty-eight hours. So, trying to keep it updated, but that'll help. I don't have a problem with putting something together. I know I send an update to Matt weekly with certain things on it. I, I definitely don't have a problem with putting more on there. I just, I just caution that some of the stuff that's on there is, in my mind, a little bit sensitive to be pushing out and, and how far out will it go? So I think we can work through that or talk through that of what we'll push out. But I, I don't have a problem with informing the council exactly what we got going on, so you can be part of the solution as well.
I just didn't know if we could already tap into a system that's already in place versus trying to create something additional?
Yeah, we're definitely looking at it. You know, we're, we're wanting to update our webpage to where we can have a, you know, a forward-facing software that the public can look at and, and kind of get more frequent updates of what's going on in the community. And then we can structure it, specific information of how we want to put it. So definitely we're working towards something there that I think is going to be very beneficial.
Well, it'd be, and it's in the interest of good and benefit of the doubt. I, I would hate to put someone on a list that is shared publicly if they are, you know, just being approached. You know, once, once an administrative process has begun, you know, just like, you know, once, when we had to send out the, the letters that we've sent out, you know, we obviously copied the council members for that individual, for those things. But, you know, I, I think that we'll have to balance that. But I absolutely echo counsel's, counsel's comments. I'm willing to see it. I think we'll just have to pick, kind of pick the threshold and be transparent about what the threshold is. Absolutely think it can be done.
And I'm certainly okay with that document being sensitive or, or for limited distribution or whatever. I just think that it would be beneficial for the council to know where, you know, issues are going on. And if it's something that, that is sensitive enough that it needs to be discretion attached to it, then just simply have an asterisk beside of it and say, see, see the manager or whatever. But just some way that we, as the elected body behind, in our inner office stuff, can see, go to one place. You know, I, I can think of one, one thing that's going on in my district now that we're, we're working on from an abatement standpoint, not law enforcement related, but we're going through a process at this particular property with certified letters and following this procedure. And frankly, nobody else probably knows about that other than the mayor because it's in my district. But if we had some way of seeing everything that was going on collectively, then that would be beneficial for all of us.
I think it's pretty reasonable. Once, once you get to the point of sending certified letters, yeah, look, we'll, absolutely echo the, echo the comments. We'll pick where that threshold is. Let, uh, let the interim manager, chief, and I have a conversation about what that, what that threshold is. But once we get to the point of sending certified letters, I can see where that's.
It's public information.
Yeah, exactly. At that point, it's public anyway. So, yeah, we'll, we'll pick a threshold that meets the objectives and we'll start including that. That's totally reasonable. Counsel, any other comments, questions? Chief, I'll let you down. Matt, if you would, another time, I want to follow up this conversation with the residential side of things. When you have a residence that's an abandoned property that is either falling into disrepair and now you've got, you know, open windows and to Councilwoman Taylor's point, someone sleeping inside of it, or you've got like a gentleman that, that had to come a number of times last year because a house is falling down and he was worried about wind blowing debris into his yard. What the process is for assisting citizens with those issues and helping to kind of uphold our standards uniformly and help those folks out of those situations too. So, but that'll be for another agenda, another night. I realize it's not tonight, but, but I'd, I'd appreciate some help on that too. Counsel, any other comments, questions for Chief West? Hearing none, thank you, sir, as always. Appreciate your time this evening. All right. Counsel, the next item on the agenda. And, and Ron or Matt, feel free to chime in at any point in here. But this is a topic that I think is highly, highly relevant right now. This is not intended to be a, it's not intended to be a ridicule. It's not intended to be anything other than a factual statement. We've got to make sure that we are living up to our code of ethics. We have some concerns with information that is sensitive information, that is frustrating the purpose of closed sessions getting out. We also have, you know, a relatively, you know, new council and some new folks in the room. So we got to make sure that everyone is very clear on what's expected. And to that point, we as council also get to choose what is expected of us. In front of you this evening, and again, I want you, want you to chime in at any point. But what's in front of you this evening is our existing ordinance converted into policy. So it's the, I make sure the ordinance as well as there's a resolution as well that's out there. Taking those things, condense them into a policy format, because that is more logical for most folks. In general, you're going to have a resolution that says we are adopting certain policies. And then an ordinance that says council shall adopt a policy on, and then maybe some other important things. All this is, is the resolution that is already, already in force, drafted, you see the watermark, drafted into a policy form. Tonight, we are not voting. I will say that at least two or three more times. We are not voting. The purpose of this is to remind council that our code of ethics exists and to implore council to read this and take some time over the next couple or few weeks to look at what are some things that you would like to add to this. This was last updated in two thousand and ten, if memory serves. Is that correct?
It, it was done in two thousand and ten because legislature passed the statute in two thousand and nine mandating that each council adopted that product as a policy. So that's why that was done in two thousand and ten. And it, it parallels essentially what the statute was saying they would like to say.
But in two thousand and twenty-four, there are, there are new and more, more novel ways of things becoming problems. So what I'm asking council, look into your own experiences. Let's see if there are things that we need to add to this that we want to hold ourselves to. I believe that we have to set a standard for conduct for our, for our constituents and for our city. And I think this is one way that we do that, because we write down what we are going to hold ourselves to. So with that, I'm not asking folks for commentary this evening. I don't want to get into, uh, get into that right now. I just want to put it back in front of everybody. Remind everyone that we do have something that we need to edit. So with, over the next couple of weeks, email Madam Deputy Clerk or Madam Clerk or Matt or myself. Sorry, I don't know why you just get a first name. Our interim manager, Matt, or myself. And let's talk about what you see on the page, this draft format, and what you'd like to see added. What are some things that you have questions about? What are some things that you see in other cities or municipalities that you'd like to add? Why is it there? Why is it not there? And let's have a conversation. Something that I do want to, to add is that I think that it would be an appropriate touch that we add that annually, council will be signing statements acknowledging our own internal code of ethics. We already have to do the, the ethics, you know, training. We already have to do the state one. But I think we should add a local layer on it. So with that, I'm not asking council for feedback this evening, unless someone just has a burning thought they want to get out there. This is purely to get council thinking. If any, if either of you or either of you have something to add, then we'll hear it. Otherwise, taking an advisement, start thinking about it in the next couple of meetings. I do want to vote on and ratify a new updated code of conduct for this council.
I'd like to reiterate briefly that essentially what happens in closed session should stay closed session. And I think it's important because it does become public knowledge. It does become public at any point. And the statute talks about that. But the statute also says that those minutes or what occurs in closed session can be kept in closed session until it no longer frustrates the purpose of going into closed session. And frustrating the purpose, as we can all interpret that, is when it's going to do harm to the whole reason you went into closed session to begin with. And if it's going to cause harm for that reason and to go in there and this information gets out there, then you're frustrating the purpose of going into closed session. Why even have it done in to begin with? And that's the issue. And I think that's important to remember is y'all, it doesn't mean anything to me. It is as if y'all are trying to accomplish certain things and get certain things done. There are some times that you don't want the information to be made public yet. Doesn't mean it won't be. It's just yet. And so whether that is, an example, if you're going to closed session, but the city wants to purchase land, we may not want anybody to know that you're trying to acquire some land yet, because that's going to cause people around there. Maybe somebody else is saying, wait a minute, if they're trying to get that, I can get this, maybe drive the price up and maybe I can make money off of it. So that's going to be frustrating the purpose. So just keep that in mind as we go through the process. Because at some point in, those minutes can be made public. And there are, are times during the year that I meet with Laura and she goes through, pulls out closed minutes from past times and says, okay, hey, can these be, doesn't mean they're published somewhere, so to speak, but if somebody requests something, say, okay, Ron, can we go through these or these, you know, these things kind of been done? So if it comes out, it's not going to cause an issue that council is trying to get something taken care of or resolved or worked through. We'll go through, oh, yeah, y'all, those are fine. You can, you can make those public now. You made those public now. We go through that process. Depending upon when she is available, whenever she wants to try to do that, we do that. So at some point, it does become public. Okay. I wanted to remind the council of that, just given the recent issues. From my perspective of advising you guys.
Yeah, I think that we all should take that under advisement. The path forward on the, on updating or updating our code of ethics, so y'all know, right now, if you go and you look in our ordinances, there are some things that are under ordinance. Those are things that basically mirror things that we're obligated by state statutes. Basically just mirrors that. We have a resolution that says all the different things. And we don't really have a, a policy, because the, the policy is the resolution. What I'm suggesting that we do, just in the name of continuity, is things that need to be part of the ordinance. We'll update the ordinance. The actual policy will become a policy. And then we'll have a resolution adopting, adopting the new policy. And if we choose to edit it in the future, then we'll have a resolution editing the policy as opposed to a resolution editing the resolution. So, again, kind of bringing it into continuity of, of documentation. Counsel, burning comments, questions, desires on that one? Perfect. I appreciate everyone taking that one and giving it some good thought. And I look forward to putting forward a, a revised version in the coming weeks. And then ultimately being able to vote on and approve a modified and updated code of ethics, certainly before year end. All right. Folks, we have moved through the work session. I'm going to go ahead and take us into the Crossroads Agreement that we moved, others requiring individual action. This is also provided in your folder this evening, or it was. There we go. Okay. So what you have in front of you is a memo, just briefing council on where we are in our crossroad strategies, our relationship. We originally signed a contract with them that was three months, four months, or was it just the summer?
It was just to the end of this fiscal year.
Just to the end of.
The past fiscal year, June thirty-first, yes.
This new agreement would take effect July one and would go to June thirty of next year. It'd be a full fiscal year agreement.
That's correct.
Worth noting, our agreement is that we would be funding half of the crossroad strategies contract overall. The county will be funding the other half of it. Our contract would be directly with Crossroads. As you see, the, the letter that is there in front of you actually has signature blocks for the county, the city, friends of Seymour, making sure that everyone is clearly documented on who, 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 what and where in the relationship. This is all in the name of having strong representation in D.C. for efforts around Seymour Johnson, but also around other funding things that come up. They've been absolutely wonderful to work with. They've been a fantastic partner. They've been, they've been responsive. And they've certainly been very effective as well. Does anybody have comments, questions on this one? And this one would actually be for the, whenever we get to that.
If I may, Mayor.
Please go ahead.
I think one of the things the city council wanted to see was the, sort of spelled out more about the contact and communication on the deliverable side. So this does require in writing that there's a bi-weekly phone call and written reports as needed. And, you know, if we ask them to come down and give some kind of briefing, I'm sure they would be willing to do that as well. So I think we wanted to increase the transparency of these types of agreements, which I agree with, and I think this does that.
Perfect. So what, what we would be asking council to approve are the terms. They would actually be using the city's form, as I understand it. But nonetheless, all of these terms, they would then be transposed into the city's form, as form and format. And then we'd be executing that. Correct, Ron?
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect. Counsel, any comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the terms of the agreement as presented.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is made and properly seconded to approve the terms of the agreement as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes. I appreciate that, everybody. This has been a good relationship, a unanimous vote of support. And I, I really do appreciate that. All information about calls will be given to every council member. It's important that all of us stay apprised of what's going on, all things DOD and, and other questions that you have as well as they come up from time to time. So with that, everybody, we have concluded, I believe, everything that we reasonably can touch during our work session. So with that, I'm going to recess to our seven o'clock meeting. At our, you want to go and do closed?
That'd be great. We got twenty, we got twenty minutes. We can get into some closed sessions.
Yes, sir. I need a motion to go into closed session.
I make a motion.
Motion made. Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes. We've gone into closed session. We'll come back out and see everyone at seven. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes. Uh, we've gone into closed session. We'll come back out and see everyone at seven.
Everybody, I appreciate everyone joining us this evening. It's a few minutes later than our normal seven o'clock start time. We had something in closed session that required an appropriate amount of deliberation, and I appreciate everyone's patience in sticking with us. So with that, we will begin with a call to order, and a welcome, so, welcome. And Father Wiley, if you would come up and lead us in the vacation, and then, given that there's a lot of scouts in the room, if we have any scouts that would be willing to come forward as a group and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I would appreciate that. So, Father?
Let us pray. Gracious, loving, and almighty God, we give you thanks for the abundant blessings of this life. We thank you for gathering us together here this evening, and we thank you for this city and its leaders. Father, give our leaders your wisdom and guidance in their discussions and decisions. Help them to be mindful of the responsibility entrusted to them, so that they make those decisions with integrity, fairness, and compassion. Father, we ask that you bless this city and its residents. Grant us the insight to see the needs of everyone, especially those who are most vulnerable. Help us to work together in unity, setting aside personal interests for the common good. May our actions reflect justice, mercy, and a commitment to the well-being of every person in our community. And finally, Father, we ask for your peace to dwell among us, that we may seek solutions that promote harmony and prosperity for everyone. And Father, guide us in our words and actions, that they may be pleasing in your sight. All this we ask in the name of your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I appreciate it, Father. Trooper Lear, if you'd bring your pack four. And Trooper Lear, if you would just introduce, introduce your individual treat, and then lead us in the pledge.
Sure, thank you. So, we have Troop Eight from New Hope Methodist Church here in Goldsboro, and we appreciate this opportunity.
Wonderful. Well, I appreciate you walking up here and introducing and saying that you'd love to do the pledge. So if you would, Jillian. You'll start.
All right. A scout salute. Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice on all.
Madam Deputy Clerk, if you would please conduct a roll call.
Mayor Boeck.
Present.
Mayor Boeck and Matthews.
Present.
Councilwoman Jones.
Present.
Councilwoman Boeck.
Present.
Councilwoman Lewis.
Present.
Councilwoman White is handling a professional obligation this evening. We wish him safe travels as he works his way back towards Goldsboro. So with that, so you all know, we concluded everything that was in the work session during the work session, even though we were a few minutes over, which puts us in a wonderful position to be able to have a fun and celebratory meeting this evening. So with that, we'll begin with Employees of the Supervisor of the Year. Your City Manager Livingston, if you would please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This year, we had actually a Supervisor of the Year and two Employees of the Year. We're going to start out with the Supervisor of the Year award. This goes to Matthew Langley for Outstanding Achievement. Matthew Langley is the Distribution Operations Manager for the Distributions and Collections Division of the Public Works Department. He always strives to improve the division as a whole, which has been even more apparent in his accomplishments in recent months. His can-do attitude, steadfast dedication, and determination enable his team to resolve every challenge, ensuring customer needs are met, while improving procedures and saving thousands of dollars. Matthew approaches every task from a customer-first perspective, scheduling repairs to limit the negative impact on local businesses. In his last three months, his team has completed a total of 119 work orders. In addition to routine maintenance, Matthew has played a key leadership role in the William Street Widening and the Mount Olive Pickle Projects, actively participating in meetings to ensure the success of projects. In November, Matthew took the lead to repair a significant sewer manhole failure. He coordinated getting bypass pumps set up, preventing sewage from backing up into residents' homes and averting a sanitary sewer overflow. The manhole was replaced without incident, saving the city approximately $30,000 in contractor cost and building confidence in staff. Matthew recently obtained his A Distribution Certification, allowing him to officially become the city's water distribution operator and responsible in charge, ORC. He is scheduled to take the cross-connection exam, which will complete his water distribution certifications. Matthew also successfully completed his Associate's Degree from Liberty University. Matthew's key attention to detail and service mindset set him apart. He is 100% committed and dedicated team player who answers every call without fail. Matthew's work ethic and accomplishments reflect well upon himself and the city of Goldsboro. Awarded this day, September 3, 2024.
And do you have anyone here that you'd like to say?
I'd like to say, you want me to stop asking? I understood. There you go.
No, 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 we've got to put you on a microphone. I've got to record all these things. You may have heard they like, you know, public transparency and things, and I want to document this.
And I don't get the opportunity often to embarrass Matthew, so, no, I'm just kidding. You heard what was said in the write-up, and it's short of what he actually does. He's one of the few that I can say gives 100% of everything he does. I don't have to go, would never have to go behind anything, and he instills that same value in his staff. He's a great supervisor. In the military, you know, we used to always put our teams together, deploy downrange. You always get your top, your top staff, and if you can select your team, that's a great thing. And if I had to select that team today, he would, he'd be at the top of the list. And I just want to say thank you. He makes Public Works shine, as do we have several, but he's one of the few. I may have another one coming up tonight, too. Anyway, but thank you very much for everything you do. I don't get to say it publicly very often, but you're definitely a valued member of the team. Would be lost without you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have two Employee of the Year awards. Normally, this goes to one, so the HR department said, Matt, what do we do? And I said, well, they both scored the same, so let's both give them an award. They're both very deserving. So the first one of the year goes to Hakeem Johnson for Outstanding Achievement. On February 8, 2024, while on foot patrol in the downtown area, police support technician Hakeem Johnson was alert, cognizant, and situationally aware of his surroundings. He observed and reported a working structure fire in the 100 block of South Center Street. Hakeem radioed the fire, radioed the fire into Wayne County Communications and immediately began to notify and evacuate residents of the affected structure and apartments. He also assisted in the evacuation of animals by catching them as the residents tossed them out at the second floor of the structure. In total, five residents and two pets were successfully evacuated. Hakeem's situational awareness and quick thinking prevented further damage and potential loss of life, and enabled our fellow first responders and the fire department to respond quickly and suppress the fire before the structure became fully engulfed in flames. His actions and early warning stopped the fire from potentially spreading to neighboring attached structures, which would have been catastrophic for many other residents and business owners. Hakeem's actions are a direct reflection of his professionalism and his desire to serve not only the Goldsboro Police Department, but the community as a whole. Hakeem's work ethic and situational awareness reflect well on himself and the city of Goldsboro. Awarded this day, September 3, 2024.
Congratulations. Here's your check there. Have you got anything you'd like to say to anyone?
Yes, so I'd just like to thank the individuals that came out to support me in my moment, so I appreciate that. Also want to thank my number-one supporter, my girlfriend, Kim St. Louis, so thank you. And can I take some pictures with her as well?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're going to take a pic.
Go around, Mike.
I don't think you will see us.
Yes. I don't think you will see us this far.
No. [laughter]
And do you have anyone here that you'd like to say?
You want me to stop asking? I understood. There you go.
Normally, this goes to one, so the H R department said, Matt, what do we do? And I said, well, they both scored the same, so let's both give them an award. They're both very deserving. So the first one of the year goes to Hakeem Johnson for Outstanding Achievement. On February 8, 2024, while on foot patrol in the downtown area, police support technician Hakeem Johnson was alert, cognizant, and situationally aware of his surroundings. He observed and reported a working structure fire in the 100 block of South Center Street. Hakeem radioed the fire into Wayne County Communications and immediately began to notify and evacuate residents of the affected structure and apartments. He also assisted in the evacuation of animals by catching them as the residents tossed them out at the second floor of the structure. In total, five residents and two pets were successfully evacuated. Hakeem's situational awareness and quick thinking prevented further damage and potential loss of life, and enabled our fellow first responders and the fire department to respond quickly and suppress the fire before the structure became fully engulfed in flames. His actions and early warning stopped the fire from potentially spreading to neighboring attached structures, which would have been catastrophic for many other residents and business owners. Hakeem's actions are a direct reflection of his professionalism and his desire to serve not only the Goldsboro Police Department, but the community as a whole. Hakeem's work ethic and situational awareness reflect well on himself and the city of Goldsboro. Awarded this day, September 3, 2024.
Yes. So I'd just like to thank the individuals that came out to support me in my moment, so I appreciate that. Also want to thank my number-one supporter, my girlfriend, Kim St. Louis, so thank you. And can I take some pictures with her as well?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes, we're going to take a pic.
[laughter]
And do you have anyone here that you'd like to recognize? It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be at that level. It could just be general, oh, hey, they've been nice to me over the years. All right. Perfect.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I can top what happened earlier, but I just want to say thanks to Mike. It's well-deserved. It's an honor and a privilege to work beside of him, keep things going in our department,
to. Then after that, we'll move to Item B under four is a Suicide Prevention Awareness Proclamation.
and well-deserved. Congratulations.
And here to receive this proclamation, I'm going to read it here, and then I'll walk out and allow y'all to introduce yourselves, say if there's anything that you want to briefly, briefly say about the organization, the hotline, whatever you want to do. So just kind of be collecting your thoughts. I'll hand you the mic. Suicide Prevention Awareness Proclamation. Whereas suicide is a public health crisis impacting people of all ages and across all socioeconomic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds, and whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in the United States, the third leading cause of death among those between ages of 15 and 24, and the second leading cause of death among individuals 25 to 34, and whereas nearly 50,000 people die by suicide across the United States each year, with an average of 137 suicides completed daily, and whereas each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members, and whereas public awareness of the warning signs and support networks, including 988 for the National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, is essential to continue lowering the rates of suicides, and whereas people are encouraged to recognize that there is no single cause of suicide and no single suicide prevention program or effort that will be appropriate for all populations and communities, and whereas initiatives based on the goals detailed in the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention in the North Carolina State Suicide Prevention Action Plan aim to prevent suicide by increasing access to evidence-informed services that address suicide, mental health, and substance abuse disorders. Now therefore be it resolved that the Goldsboro City Council does hereby proclaim suicide prevention awareness in the city of Goldsboro and call upon all citizens to create hope through action and encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others includes taking care of mental health. Now therefore be it resolved that the Goldsboro City Council asks all citizens to support suicide prevention awareness by attending the Suicide Prevention Awareness Vigil on September 24, 2024, on the steps of our historic city hall. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and affix the seal of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, this the third day of September 2024. Ms. Jackson, Ms. Reese, if you'd all come forward.
I'm not going to steal any of the thunder. Ms. Jackson, if you'd like to introduce, and then Ms. Reese, obviously, always welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Victoria Jackson, I'm the Regional Vice President for Trillium Health Resources, who served Wayne County, so I'm so elated to be here, and thank you for the invitation. Suicide prevention is serious. Take it very seriously at Trillium Health Resources. This endeavor, suicide prevention, is deeply personal to me because I lost my brother to suicide, so I know all too well the pain and the grief that it can cause on families, friends, and the community as a whole. So we at Trillium Health Resources, we are committed to the city of Goldsboro, to provide education, resources, do outreach. We have a 24/7 behavioral health call center, so that call center is for individuals who are in crisis. If you visit our website at trilliamhealthresources.com, you can find all of that information. And Melissa Reese is our community liaison coordinator. She also serves Wayne County. Would you like to have a few words?
I'm good.
So again, thank you. We are committed to the city of Goldsboro, and we look forward to the continued collaboration and partnership.
So for those that already know what Trillium Health Resources does, you have certain managed care organizations that hit certain parts of the state. And forgive me for using the wrong acronym, I'm only a healthcare attorney, I'm going to get them wrong, but the, the point is that when Goldsboro experienced a rash of deaths several months back, we all remember that. I don't think I have to rehash any of that. One of the first phone calls was to a couple of board members of Trillium Health, and within about three days, we had the C E O, we had Ms. Reese, we had Ms. Jackson sitting in, sitting in one of the conference rooms over in city hall, talking about what we can do to try and bring more collaboration between Goldsboro City Police, who are responding to these situations, and city resources, and Trillium, and trying to get folks to help. And I just want to draw attention to that. That took a lot of effort, that took a lot of work, and I appreciate that commitment and another show of commitment. I just simply wanted to draw attention to them. And in case you haven't noticed before, next time you drive down the highway, you see a billboard, and you see a little green triangle and the word Trillium, now you're going to have a face with the name. So, thank you.
Thank you.
a few folks to come forward and receive this one as well. So Latino Heritage Month Proclamation. Whereas each year from the 15th of September to the 15th of October, National Latino Heritage Month is celebrated throughout the United States, and whereas Latinos comprise roughly 11.4% of the population of the state of North Carolina as of June 2024, and have both an integral and necessary community in our state, and whereas Latinos comprise 12.7% of the population of Wayne County as of 2022, and whereas the city of Goldsboro openly welcomes and supports its distinct cultural diversity, and whereas we are further inspired by the economic, social, and cultural contributions of the Latino community within the city of Goldsboro and Wayne County, and whereas we understand that although this national recognition lasts each, lasts each year for one month, we work endlessly to create a more socially inclusive and diverse society with equality for all populations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Goldsboro City Council does hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2024, as Latino Heritage Month in Goldsboro, North Carolina, and extend best wishes to all of our communities as they hold appropriate ceremonies to commemorate this observance. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and calls the seal of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, to be affixed this the third day of September 2024. Ms. Frelo, Mr. Guzman, if you'd like to bring anybody forward.
The first thing you need to know about Latinos is that we're collaborative, so we call us a pack. And we all, we'll all be.
Eddie, you got to have a mic.
I often say the first thing to know about Latinos is that we're an individualistic community, we're a collaborative community, so we come as a pack, and so we're here as a pack from ages 20-something to 50-something, so we're happy to be here. Thank you.
So, very briefly, in council, some of you already know about, about some of this work, and those of you watching at home, some of you know about this work. Different chambers of commerce, from your local chambers of commerce to your, your state, your national, have different areas of trying to promote entrepreneurship, trying to create, create community. And I've always been someone who believed in entrepreneurship. Coincidentally, Esteban Guzman has a job that I once held as Director of Small Business Center at Wayne Community College, what I believe is one of the finest jobs in all of Wayne County, because your entire role is to lift other people up and help them build things that are then going to fuel the economy and the community around them. And so when this proclamation came calendar time, I sent a couple of text messages, said, hey, I want to do this properly, what's the right way to do it? And obviously, the answer to the call is you always do. So, Ms. Frelo, thank you so much. Esteban, always a pleasure. Friends, you know that my office is open to you, the city is open to you, we want to see more. We want to see success, we want to see growth. So with that, I'd like to present this, if you would, and then I will put this down, and we'll do a picture, and then anything else that y'all would like to say, you're welcome to.
To the council, thank you for the section that says. We're working this leads to create a more socially inclusive, diverse society with equality for all populations. We thank you for that message that you are giving us tonight. I also told the mayor that we hope to hold you accountable to that peace respectfully and lovingly, and we are here to hold you accountable for the rest of the time, not just for the space, but for forever now. I thank you so much for having the Latinos in the house tonight. We appreciate you.
Proclamation, and I'll simply read this one as well. This one, I don't have a formal presentation for, it's just one that we always want to draw attention to. Constitution Week Proclamation. Whereas September 17, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, as well as the patriotic celebrations with which we'll commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and whereas Constitution Week commemorates the eventful week in September 1787, when the Constitution was signed, delivered to the Continental Congress, and made known to the people of the country. It laid the foundation for the birth of a new nation and became one of the most magnificent chapters in our history, and whereas North Carolina was one of the original 13 colonies and was represented by three signers of the Constitution, William Blount, Richard Dobbs Spate, and Hugh Williamson. Now therefore be it resolved that the Goldsboro City Council commemorates the official recognition being given to this magnificent document on its anniversary, and does hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through the 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week in Goldsboro, North Carolina, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and calls the seal of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, to be affixed this the third day of September 2024. Council, with that, we have concluded the presentations and ceremonial documents. We'll move directly into a public comment period. The policy of our, and anyone that would like to be excused, please, by all means. We'll pause for just a second while we get the policy for the public comment period up. I'll be honest, y'all picked about the best meeting you could have picked to grab that badge, because this one, the last one was seven hours, this one, I don't think will be. So we'll move directly into public comment period. Madam Deputy Clerk.
I believe the first name is.
Albert Van Cleek. Yes, please. That's okay. Al, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening, good evening, everyone.
And if you would, for me, just restate your name for the record, since we weren't able to quite get it there. Always good to see you.
Yes. My name is Albert Van Cleek. I'm a resident of Goldsboro, representing my neighborhood watch to address illegal drug activity and prostitution. I invested in our city a little over two years ago, purchasing my home in an area I learned too late, local prostitutes call the Ho-stroll, defined by them, to me, as from Ash to Elm and Slocum to Herman. We have other landmarks as well, the dope house and an apartment complex known as the hole. Last summer, a woman was found naked and dead in a car in that parking lot. Children aren't allowed outdoors. I have a bullet lodged in my electrical panel.
I'll be honest, y'all picked about the best meeting you could have picked to grab that badge, because this one, the last one was seven hours, this one I don't think will be. So we'll move directly into public comment period. Madam Deputy Clerk.
I believe the first name is...
Albert Van Cleek. Yes, please.
My handwriting is correct.
That's okay. Al, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening, good evening, everyone.
And if you would for me, just restate your name for the record, since we weren't able to quite get it there, always good to see.
Yes. My name is Albert Van Cleek. I'm a resident of Goldsboro, representing my neighborhood watch to address illegal drug activity and prostitution. I invested in our city a little over two years ago, purchasing my home in an area I learned too late, local prostitutes call the Ho Stroll. Defined by them, to me, as from Ash to Elm and Slocum to Herman. We have other landmarks as well, the dope house and an apartment complex known as the hole. Last summer, a woman was found naked and dead in a car in that parking lot. Children aren't allowed outdoors, I have a bullet lodged in my electrical panel, another neighbor had a bullet come through her living room window. I have video of a group of people riding on top of a car, shooting into the air as they drove through the intersection outside my home. The pastor of the Pentecostal Church frequently cleans up trash from behind the church, including used condoms. I've been fiscally assaulted twice and frequently faced racial slurs and threats against my life when I'm outside my home telling the strollers to move on. Then they accuse me of racism and threaten, I know the gangs, they are a gang. These activities undermine the sense of security we all deserve. They tell us we need to stay inside and mind our own business. To this we say, hell no. We pay taxes to live in this city, taxes they aren't paying, and we refuse to cower behind double lock doors and tightly drawn drapes. We will not relinquish control of our streets to criminals. Some say we need to leave these matters to police, that it's their job, and we agree. But with all due respect, we simply don't see that happening with effective consistency. Research tells us the single most powerful action citizens can take against crime is to be visible outside their homes. Local prostitutes and drug dealers claim that we're being, they're being harassed when we do this. They claim we're harassing them because, because they can't operate with the impunity they've become accustomed to. We see them, they know we see them, and they don't like it. We urge law enforcement and all city leaders to be proactive in their support of, in our efforts to take back our streets. We seem to live in a time of both sides-ism, where it's too political to take a strong stand. Nobody's right, everybody's wrong, but there is still a clear distinction between right and wrong. Crime is always wrong and doesn't operate in a vacuum. And although prostitution and drug sales may be considered low-level crimes, prostitution, drugs, shots fired, trespassing, breaking and entering are all related. And crime has no color, enough is enough. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Van Cleek, I have a question before you step in. Your neighborhood watch, how often do they meet, and would you be willing to share those times?
Well, my neighborhood watch, my neighborhood watch is actually a spinoff from an original neighborhood watch that actually was started by Councilwoman Taylor and I. I have been assigned to the streets from Leslie going east, Down Pine to Beale, Nile, Brazil Street, that whole area back there that I've been assigned to. The members of my neighborhood watch don't want to come together and meet, because they're afraid they'll be seen and retaliated against. So our meeting is consistent and ongoing through emails and texts, and once in a while, if I'm outside, someone will pull up to the curb and, you know, chat about something. But that's how bad it is, that people won't, they won't come together and meet publicly because they're afraid they're going to be seen. So I have a really kind of unique way that we operate.
You and I have had, have had conversations. I want to help, I want to do more. We cannot give up your neighborhood. We cannot give up any part of this city. And I'm so appreciative of the sacrifice that you're making, because I know what you've been through. And I, there's nothing that I can say right now that is going to make you believe me when I say this, but I am committed to helping and to getting your neighborhood safe again. When I was, when I was a kid, that was a safe neighborhood. It needs to be again. It's, it can't keep going the way it's going.
Well, it was originally part of the historic district until it got written out when the downtown was developed. I guess because of grants, it was easier to get grants for a smaller focused area, but it was actually part of the historic district, it is no longer. If it remained part of the historic district, we probably would have some opportunities to revitalize the blight that has taken hold in, in that whole section of Evergreen area. So we keep, we keep fighting the good fight. I'm the most visible, I'm outside my home a lot, that's why I like living in North Carolina, because I can be outside, and I've been landscaping, as I said, I bought the house just over two years ago. So I've been cutting down trees and planting shrubs and all kinds of stuff outside, plus I like being outside. And the strollers do not like it at all. They walk by and I don't, I don't want to say the horrible language of what they call me, but then they say I'm harassing them. So anyway, we, we haven't given up, but I wanted to make this public comment.
I appreciate it.
Because we can use all the support that we can get in our efforts. Well, you know, I take a brick to the back and a tree branch to the head, because I don't like what's happening in the neighborhood. You know, calling the police is always the first option, but by the time police arrive, they've disappeared. There are, there are, they know ways to get through that neighborhood, that have, there's holes and fences, and then there are people in the neighborhood who harbor them, it's a safe harbor, they let them in and hide from the police.
We'll, we'll continue our discussion soon, if it's okay.
Well, I appreciate the time and the, your, your interest and, and the support, any support we can get will be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Is there anyone else to come forward to speak in public comment?
Richard Taylor.
Evening.
I am Richard Taylor, District One. And on June the 28th of this year, District Four, young man Jaden Van, 19-years-old, was killed in Willow Run. The individuals that killed him was one of three individuals known to police, Daniel Ortiz Roden, Grace Ellen Riley, and Eduardo Nuarez, three people. And originally, the police put out the narrative that it was a botched robbery, and that is somewhat true. However, there is a video, clear-cut video, which puts the incident in context. There was a video, and if you guys need to see the video, I will send it to you. Jaden and his friend walked up to the back of a car, had about a two-second interaction with another individual who was standing at the back of the car. Jaden and the other gentleman ran. The gentleman that they had the interaction with ran the other way. About two seconds later, an individual gets out of the car, who had no interaction with Jaden and the other gentleman. Chased Jaden and the other gentleman down, shot him, and killing Jaden. And so, I think everyone in here, including the police officer right there, would agree that that is not self-defense. And speaking with members of the family, they are dissatisfied with the communication that they have got from Goldsboro Police Department. I've been told by someone close to the situation that Goldsboro Police Department has handed the decision to charge those three individuals over to the DA. Consequently, the DA has informed the family that they are not going to charge anyone. The first reason was they didn't know who was with Jaden, however, someone close to the situation sent me a picture of Jaden and another individual only 10 minutes before the shooting, right in the same area that the shooting happened. So that would dispute that excuse. So I'm imploring you, city attorney, Chief West in his absence, and all of you leaders up here, to enact justice for that family. Because anyone who looks at that video would see that there is no self-defense, that is clear-cut murder. You can't shoot someone in the back. The person got, who got out of the car was not in any imminent danger. So we're going to continue to keep this matter in front of you until, you know, the family sees some semblance of justice.
Just have, have one simple question, and don't, don't put yourself in any compromised situation.
You're fine.
A lot of the videos that go out, by the time they get second-hand, third-hand, fourth-hand, it's difficult to, it's difficult to validate the video and the person that took the video, and then they end up not being admissible as evidence in a criminal trial. And I've had conversations with prosecutors, I'm not going to say, say who or which, that get very, very frustrated because they can clearly see that you can't validate who took the video and show a chain of custody in the evidence piece. If you or anyone else who is listening can help with that piece of it, ensuring that whoever captured the video is willing to say, even quietly until trial, I captured that video and put ownership on it, to where the, the evidence and the chain of evidence can, can stand up to trial, it will help. But don't, again, don't put yourself in any sort of compromised position. That is a consistent piece of feedback that I've, that I've gotten, and I'll also want to try to help, because it will help the effectiveness of the policing, that when things get handed over to the DA's office, that then they're able to actually put something together that a grand jury would indict on.
I understand, and to answer that, the video was taken from a camera in a person's home, in their garage, and you can actually see the person come out. And so, I mean, I don't think that is too hard for the police.
And I wasn't speaking about any specific video, that was kind of a general thing, because I know you, I know you're, you're very good at helping to get the word out and get specific messaging out that can, that can help make things happen.
All right. Well, thank y'all for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Deputy Clerk, is there anyone else to come forward, help a comment period?
No, sir. No, sir, I don't have anyone else on my list.
All right, so with that, we'll close the public comment period. And we will, there are no consent agenda items, for those that were watching during the work session, we moved Item E to, to items requiring individual action. Item E, action on Item E happened during the work session, it was approved. So with that, we will move directly into, to Section 9 on our agenda, the City Manager's Report. Mayor Manager Livingston.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things as a reminder that Thursday night stays to Wayne, it's a kickoff to Freedom Fest, and of course, Saturday's Freedom Fest, some big events for City Goldsboro. And the administration level, the management has put out the city management practices, best management practices, and the department have put forth their best management practices, and we're implementing those, and we'll have a report on that in a month or so. Also, next meeting, we should have a budget calendar that I'm going to ask you to look at, and part of that is trying to figure out dates for our retreat, which will be a really important date for us, because we've got a lot of, a lot of heavy lifting to do there, as part of a lot of the things that we're doing, different projects and different studies. We're getting our capital improvement plan updated. Again, we, we're going to go before the LGC to get off the UAL list, and we're asking for some money, because we have to do some borrowing. Part of what you have to do as a municipality is to sort of fund things, programs and whatnot. So we're, we've got a scheduled date for that. We're involved in a comprehensive transportation master plan and a bike head plan now, that's through the MPO. You'll be seeing a presentation on that in a few weeks. We've also started a pavement condition rating index study, we'll be finished with that in about 30 days as well. All this ties into, you know, looking at what, assessing what our needs are going forward in the upcoming budget years and the capital improvement plan that we need to be doing. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Appreciate that, thank you, sir. All right, we'll move into Mayor and Councilmember's comments, I'll save mine for last, it's the first meeting of the month, so we'll begin with District One, Councilwoman Jones, Forrester.
Yes, just, just a few reminders, when we're all trying to be safe, there's a lot of things going on, a lot of criminal activity going along, and, and there's some things that we, as citizens, can do. And just a reminder that it is getting darker, so think about filling up your gas tank before sunset, and have an extra charger in your phone, and, with your phones, with your cell phone. Try to make no visits at the ATM whenever it's dark. And ladies, if you're getting out of the car and you're alone, do not unlock your car until you're getting ready to get out, and then unlock your car and get out. And just stay safe. We want everybody safe and protected.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Boyett, Forrester.
Just a couple of brief things. I'd just like to say thank you to everyone that's reached out to me regarding my recent appointment by the League of Municipalities to their Legislative Policy Committee, and I appreciate all the thanks that I've received and, and well wishes in that regard, and I look forward to, as I've said, advocating for our great city in that capacity in that regard. I'd also, as always, like to say thank you to all of our hard-working employees of this city, and our public safety as well, everyone, for everything that you do to keep us safe and keep our city operating. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Taylor.
Okay. So my comments tonight are going to address an issue that's very close to my heart, and this does have to do with District Three, I know all of Goldsboro is important. So, and that's going to be the revitalization of the neglected and overlooked areas of District Three. So when I ran for office, I made a pledge, several pledges to the community, two of them were to ensure safer neighborhoods and also to tackle blight. To me, these two goals are closely interconnected. To eliminate, to eliminate blighted properties, we must first identify them. We also need to recognize the factors in our neighborhoods that contribute to the unsafe environments. The residents of District Three deserve the same quality of life as those in any other neighborhood or district in Goldsboro. Businesses that contribute to crime and unsafe conditions can be addressed, but only if we as citizens and as a city understand that just because something has been a certain way for a long period of time, doesn't mean it must remain that way. Positive change is possible. I ask everyone familiar with my neighborhood and community to envision a future with less crime, where our stores offer fresh, quality food, and you can fuel your car without fear for your safety. Imagine streets where you can go for walks and, and ride your, walk your dog or ride your bike without worrying about stray bullets. I ask you to see my vision for a better neighborhood in a better city, because I can see it, and I firmly believe that if we all work together, we can make this vision a reality. Good job.
Thank you. Right, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder to the district, I made a post, I think it went up today, about passing out popsicles this week. Not too long ago, Piggly Wiggly on Lionel Street donated some popsicles to this initiative that I had with trying to offer some type of initiative or fun thing for the kids, since our pool was not open, that is the one thing our kids look forward to every summer. So the fire department graciously brought the sprinklers out, participation was really, really low, so I have a lot, a lot of popsicles. So I have decided to do a Where's Waldo, AKA kind of Councilwoman, going to be going throughout the neighborhoods this weekend, passing out popsicles, and I have lots of them, so please follow the page to see where I'll be and ensure, as we are reaching the end of the summer, that you come and get a popsicle. As always, I love you District Four, and there is gold in Goldsboro. Thank you, Mayor.
Good stuff, thank you. And Councilwoman Wicks.
I have two brief things. First of all, I just want to encourage everybody to come out this weekend to participate in North Carolina Freedom Fest. It's going to be an amazing, family-friendly time where we can honor our military personnel, their families, also our first responders, there'll be vendors, you know, car shows, food trucks, and so just come out and let's just get together as a community and have a good time. The last thing I'd like to say is a statement, if you see something, say something. Just last week, because of pressure from concerned citizens, concerned citizens in our community, law enforcement was able to do a sting, and it was some pressure that was put, additional pressure that was put on law enforcement, they were able to do a sting at an establishment and rescue two sex workers out of the establishment and get them reunited to safety with their families. So I want to encourage all of you, you know, it started with conversations, it started with conversations, I, I want to tell you that social media can even be used for good, can be used for good. So I want to encourage you, again, if you see something, say something, you can report it to Crime Stoppers, you can also report it to our local law enforcement, and you can do that anonymously, you do not have to give your name, you don't have to give your phone number, you don't have to give your location, but if you see something, say something, because in this case, it was imperative, and because of that, before I stepped onto council, those two families wanted to say thank you, because they have been reunited with their daughters.
Thank you, Councilwoman. My comments are, again, very, very brief. You've already heard five very passionate individuals speak about things that they want to see happen in their districts and want to see happen for the city of Goldsboro, I could not agree more. I think that the citizens of the, citizens of the city of Goldsboro are, are hitting a point where they're saying, we've had enough, and the communities are ready to take their, their streets back. And it, communities of all welts and colors and demographics are saying, we're tired of not feeling like we can play. we can play in our front yard and our backyard. And I'm, I'm so grateful, because sitting up here, you can do certain things to turn certain knobs and levers, but ultimately, the community has to be unified in what the community wants to see. This weekend, or sorry, Thursday night, Taste of Wayne, fantastic event, I hope those that are able to go are able to go, have a safe time, enjoy it. Freedom Fest this weekend, big concert series, big car show, big, you know, big event, again, go out, try to enjoy it, no costs associated, you know, just go walk around the car show, just go, go take a look at some stuff, it's, it's a fantastic festival. With that, that concludes my comments, we have already addressed our matters in closed session, and so if there's anything else to come before council, Ron, going once, going twice?
I just want to add one thing.
Please.
Earlier tonight, there was a suicide prevention resolution that was read, and I just urge anybody that has mental health issues in their families to not be shy about it, to come forward, to confront those, help is out there, help is needed, and oftentimes, people are ashamed because of that in their families. My father took his own life about forty years ago, last month, and I think at that time was a big stigma attached to it, I just want to urge people that if you need help, to seek it out, because it is there. Sorry, I don't want to say anything, but I thought it was appropriate to mine.
Thank you, Ron.
Mr. Livingston, going once, going twice? For a drink.